Council meeting with the utility service board uh Wednesday, September twenty fourth. Uh to order is currently six oh four P M. Uh Brenda, would you do your call please? Sure. Up there.
Rose.
Lance Millard.
Here.
David Rudd.
Yes ma'am.
Rex Waters the third.
Rose.
And Andy Wuss.
Here. Uh okay, the first thing that we're gonna discuss um is not on the agenda, but it regards the National Police Department. I'm gonna let Kenny talk.
I appreciate you letting me take advantage of you guys all being here. Uh I think most of you guys now know that we had an unexpected resignation from the police department, so it's personal issues. And uh on a fairly short notice, uh Officer Turner is gonna be leaving us uh and her final day on payroll will be October third. Which is pretty inconvenient timing for us, and that's what I'm kind of here to ask about trying to promote uh Officer May Hall from our reserve division to our full-time uh spot that is vacated by Heather and to get him working on a payroll by October sixth, so we don't miss any of our coverage. And all that would be pending the approval of the uh Public Safety Board that will be having a special meeting on Friday morning to interview Riley. Uh my intention in that meeting, Riley's been with this agency for several years. I can only speak to the last year where he's just had exemplary service and has put in lots, lots of hours above and beyond uh what he's been required to do. So that is my plan is to get the to recommend him to the Public Safety Board. And I know this kind of feels a little bit in reverse, but it's you know, it was very inconvenient time considering our council meeting was just last week and I didn't know this information until literally five hours after our Public Safety Board had its quarterly meeting on Monday. So what I was gonna, what I wanna ask the council was to have permission based on the approval of the public or the yeah, Public Safety Board is to be able to have Riley on payroll. Uh sworn in as a full-time officer on October sixth. We don't have any payroll liability with Officer Turner. We have a lot of her crew time that would keep us uh in any budget ways from having no break in service in that position. Uh side note to that is, and obviously something that's a council issue is Officer Turner isn't a contract with the city or the town. Uh that would have to be an issue that that's considered by the council and how you guys want to proceed with that. Uh so basically what I'm asking is the for the permission that pending a a positive approval from the Public Safety Board is to hire Riley May Hall to a full-time position on October sixth.
Does Riley need to then go to the academy somewhere?
He will, yeah, he will have, he has several certifications from the time he spent as a federal officer, but they are not a state certification. So he'll still be required to get a state certification. Obviously, tend to put him under a similar contract as to what I just talked about with Heather.
See the officer used to work for the.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he spent ten years as a as a vehicleist officer.
And where's he currently at?
Uh in Barclome County.
Okay.
I don't know his exact address off the top of my head.
And then how would we handle the existing contract? Alan, do you can speak to that?
Uh the one with the.
With Officer Turner?
Yes. I mean, that's up to you. I mean, her contract looked like.
You have that for a person?
We can talk about it in details. I think it is in in details in the executive session. And I think it's up to you guys what what you wanna do. We can talk about it. I would suggest an executive session. And as far as the um reviewing everything to do what he's asking, you're you're good. We can do what he's asked.
Okay.
I don't like the notion of Riley with approval from our state.
Uh any other questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all votes aye.
Thank you. And we do need to talk about the contract.
Yep.
At some point.
So we'll get an executive session set up for that.
I have copies.
Let me say, let's talk about her contract for the new contract.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. You guys want to do your roll call now?
Uh they need to call the orders as you're ready.
I am ready.
It's called a USB meeting to order. And I'm Jim Kramer.
Tom Roberts.
Christie Crano.
Dave Cookie.
Alicia's not here.
All right, can we discuss the water system upgrades?
Yes, the just to summarize, three years ago, the town commissioned an engineer to a master plan that identified three phases. One was a needed now, which was seventeen million dollars to do work downtown. Phase two was to be done in the next five to ten years, which was fourteen million dollars to replace asbestos cement water main replacements. And phase three was an annual maintenance and repair budget of a million bucks a year for fifty years, which would be another fifty million dollars. And so our conclusion was that the scale of that was so large that what we would ask the consultants to do is to come up with a quote-unquote phase one light, for lack of a better word for it, and try to shrink the phase one down to something that was more manageable. The thought being if we if there's no appetite for the master plan, which is big money, then why even go down that road? Let's come up with a phase one light that's as compressed as we can get it, as small as we can get it. So if there's no appetite for that, then um or said it other way, rather than make the number so high, get the number as small as we can, so at least we've got something that we know is our quote-unquote least cost to get the work done. And they presented the plans. We kind of zeroed in on um a twelve-point-four-million-dollar plan to put the water tower in town. Uh increase the size of the local piping from six-inch, eight-inch that's there today uh to basically twelve-inch, connect the tower to the town through twelve-inch piping, connect the tower to Salt Creek Village, for lack of a better, maybe that's not Hawthorne Village or whatever, so that we would have fire flow. They did a fire flow study as well. And the fire flow that we have today is on the order of magnitude of seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. And per, for lack of a better word, state fire flow standards. Dan can speak to it more specifically. It should be thirty-five-hundred gallons a minute. So what we have is one-fifth what we would need for fire flow. And this plan at least provides that. The second thing we've heard is there's lots of leaks. And the water loss is high for a community our size. And we know why five-year-old were put in in the fifties and sixties. And Robin seems to think that a lot of the leaks are if we had a big leak that where water was running out on the ground, we'd go race to it and fix it. So the leaks must be more than likely, the leaks are small, but many as opposed to a big leak that we'd see and water be bubbling up and we go fix it. And that's probably from in a system that has fourteen-hundred taps, fourteen-hundred customers, it's probably a little bit of water from a lot of different old taps. And so while the spending the money in town, that maybe the primary benefit is fire flow. On all the stuff to keep replacing town, you would be providing new taps as well. And so while Nathan and Dan can't put a finger on what a calculator and say, this is how many gallons we'll save, it just makes sense that if you put in new taps for the customers that we have in town, four or five hundred customers, and we wouldn't be doing all of them, but we would see some reflection of, we would hope to see some loss or improvement in water loss. And the third thing that we know is that the water pressure in town is high, we've heard. Why is it high? It's because the water tanks are on top of Kelly Hill. And the tank elevation is nine forty. And the town, as the general rule, uh let's pick the high school, is six-twenty. So there's three-hundred-and-twenty feet of head. And if we convert three-hundred-and-twenty feet of head to PSI, that's a hundred-and-forty PSI. So the reason that we have high pressure is because the tank's on top of the hill. So by having that tank in town close to town and having it connected with large di- larger diameter pipe would have fire flow. But the second thing that we get is we can create a pressure zone for town that will be more in the a hundred PSI range or ninety PSI range. And we would also hope that if in town, where most of the customers are, have lower pressure, more manageable pressure, you would also see some reduction in loss as a result of that. Now, the master plan, it was a master plan. We kind of boiled that down to what we'd call a phase one light. Dan and Nathan and Jared helped us with the rate study. We're not saying today, this is the plan, black and white, it has to be exactly this way. They've kind of done this for free. You could say that they've refreshed the master plan, but at least we boiled it down to satisfy what we think are our needs and come up with something where now, in my mind, and seem to be the consensus of the board, if we had the money, this is what we would do as a phase one plan to solve these things. And so that part of what we've been doing is fairly settled. But I guess the point I make is that we could spend more, we could spend less, but it won't be, if it's twelve million, it's not gonna be six million. Now, can you do something for six million? Yeah, but I don't know if it checks all the boxes on what we want to do. But the other part is when we did the rate study, we see what the rate study's gonna be. The question seems to be, we know what we want to do. The question is how to pay for it. And it seemed to make sense to at least share it with the town council, so that collectively we can decide if there's no appetite to do it, then why spend more time thinking about it? If there is some appetite to do it, then we can do, carry it a little further. Uh does anybody have twelve million dollars in their back pocket? Do we know someplace to go get it? And that's just kind of where we're at. And so it seems like my goal would simply be to let the town council understand what it is we've planned to do. And where we're at on what it would mean as far as a rate increase, I don't know that that anybody's gonna be jumping up and down on our fourteen-hundred rate payers to pay a seventy percent increase. And so it's kind of like we're as far as we can go without having some consensus on a direction as to what to do next. And I don't mean to talk for four hours. I didn't have anything planned, a speech planned. But I unless somebody, I kind of think I've covered where we're at. And the hope was that maybe you guys have some questions or some ideas or wanna we're just trying to share. It doesn't seem to me to make any sense to recommend formally, go get everybody on the USB and here's the twelve-million-dollar plan, lay that in your lap. Formally lay it in your lap only to find out there's some appetite for it, put the town on the spot of of saying yes or no, like us saying, well, let's get it to the town. Let's see if Mikey will eat it. And so it just seems like collectively as a group, it seems like it makes more sense for us to all think about it or talk about it and tell us what our feelings are. If that makes any sense. I hope it does.
Let me add a couple of things. Um Jim explained that very, very well. Uh the reason that we were, we basically had three reasons why we were looking at this. Uh number one in our minds is fire flow and safety. Uh Jim mentioned you have seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. You don't have that for very long. Um requirement is, especially in a downtown area that's got a lot of wood construction and a lot of close businesses, you need at least thirty-five-hundred gallons a minute for two hours. And that's about four-hundred-to-five-thousand gallons of water. You don't have, you're not even close.
Well, timeout, we, for their benefit, we have it. It's on the top of Kelly Hill, but it's connected to a small diameter pipe. And so you can't get it here.
Can't get it here, yes. Thank you. That's more bad. That's probably a little more accurate. You you still have it, uh but you can't get it here.
We don't have the flow.
Don't have the flow. Yeah, it uh so that was number one. The second one is the leaks, as Jim mentioned. Uh we we would be replacing a lot of these mains and services with new pipe, reducing those leaks. Yeah, your your water loss is about forty-five, forty to forty-five percent. You don't buy, you don't produce water. You buy water. So you're paying for forty-five percent more than what you ought to be paying for. Now, there's always leaks in water man- water systems. But you typically want to keep those under twenty percent. You're more than twice that.
I I would, I would add, just to jump in. We lose forty-five percent, but if you flip the equation around the other way, it means that we buy sixty percent more than what we need. We go through a hundred, we buy a hundred-and-sixty million gallons, we sell a hundred. So really, we're losing sixty over the hundred. We're losing sixty percent of our water.
Yeah, and and those leaks.
And that and normal, normal would be thirty percent.
They're between the tanks on a hill here or they're just. They're kind of everywhere, but with the downtown being at a hundred-and-forty PSI, that exacerbates the leak issue. Uh you know, if you've got a, and we would reduce, the third thing is we would reduce the pressure from a hundred-and-forty to about eighty uh with an elevated tank. So in those areas that you've got a hundred-and-forty to down to eighty, you're gonna lose a lot. Uh the plastic pipe that's downtown and the asbestos cement pipe, which is a lot of the pipe as well, is not built for that kind of pressure, especially sustained loads.
Well, nothing is uh the I have experienced at the restaurant, we have the pressure reducer little, just wants to stop. And I know my uh the the building across the street, um he's put on electronics to monitor it. He claims it jumps.
Which is technically feasible to see at a hundred-and-forty PSI.
Right. Right.
For a little perspective, in your house, my house, where we have a water closet that's toilet and the tank's one-point-six gallons. And it takes, for fun, let's just say it takes thirty seconds to fill it or something. And let's say we're using three-and-a-half gallons a minute and when the flak阀门 shut and you hear it run, okay. But if you multiply the three-and-a-half gallons times sixty and then multiply it by twenty-four, it winds up being five-thousand gallons a day. And if you multiply that by a month, now you're talking about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a month for one toilet. Now, billing-wise, right, I only use twenty-five-hundred gallons or three-thousand gallons a month, cause everything's working. But when you think, how could you lose sixty percent of your water, sixty million gallons, if you got fourteen-hundred customers that run all the way from Belmont to Bean Blossom, there's over fifty miles of piping in the system. Fifty miles? And it's only twenty miles, twenty-five miles to Bloomington. So you got enough pipe in the system to get to Bloomington and back. So every one of those joints, every one of those taps, it adds up. Normal would be half of that. So it's not like we're everybody losing water. But when the if they part negotiated their deal on with us on their water, they said, ooh, sixty, forty-five percent is too high. We're only gonna pay twenty-five. Well, they negotiated their rate. But anyway, continue, sorry.
So the, so the water tank would would serve uh two purposes. You'd have fire flow. You would have reduced pressure downtown. And so you would need a PRV, uh individual PRVs, we we reduce it to where it was normal, what normal people see in 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 most water systems. And uh so those are the three big reasons. Fire flow, big deal, safety issue, just don't have it, can't get it. Uh the high pressure from the leaks. So those three items, if we if we spent the, did the project, that would alleviate most of the leaks and definitely alleviate the the issue of fire flow.
It it's understandable why we're here in the fifties and sixties when David's dad was running the laundromat. We just wanted water. It was a blessing just to have water. Who cares about fire flow? And and then you can imagine, so we had to go to Belmont to get it from like, and else boom, it's here. And then somebody in Bean Blossom said, boy, it'd be nice to have water up there. So we wind up running it up there. And so it's understandable why we're where we are. And even the way the and then if you said, well, well, county council, well, why, why have you waited this long? Well, one of the things you learn is that the way that the regulatory stuff is set up, you can't or you still can't. It's frowned upon to rat hole money for ten years so that you can then have money at the end of the ten years to go do something. Meaning it's raise the rates instead of raising seventy, raise, raise ten percent. Let's generate five-hundred-thousand dollars a year, save it for five, save it for ten years until we get five-hundred-million dollars. The regulatory commission says, well, what happens to the people that die during the ten years? What happens to the people that move out of town? What happens to the guy that moves into town the day before you turn it on? The benefit and the cost don't line up. And so, which means you need to go, the the way that everything is done is via bonds. And on the cost that we have out of this twelve-point-four-million dollars, it's about five-hundred-thousand dollars a year to pay. It's one-point-two-million dollars generates the seventy percent rate increase, one-point-two-million dollars a year. Our overall budget's one-point-six. So and the town's budget's million bucks a year. So it's a big chunk of money. But of that, five-hundred-thousand dollars is to pay back the loan, twelve-point-four-million divided by twenty-five years. There's about four-hundred-thousand dollars a year in interest. So if we could give a three rate like we did on the wastewater plant, where it's half the money, we'll give you and the other half you had to pay back at zero percent, that would help. And the third thing is, when you sell bonds, you're required to have bond coverage. And the bond coverage is about three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. So on this one-point-two-million that's rolled in with the rate increase numbers, it's five-hundred-thousand to pay the loan back, four-hundred-thousand in interest, and three-hundred-thousand dollars in bond cover.
So we'll let Jared talk a little bit about rates and what we're doing. I'm gonna pass out. So that's the project that we were looking at. If I can grab one and pass it down. Uh that's the recommended scenario. You can see that we are not replacing every pipe downtown. But we are producing or installing fire downtown. And it'll be an elevated tank to cover those community yards. The looping will reveal some fire flow. And the other thing I've noticed, you know, when you drive around downtown, you don't see a lot of fire hydrants here. Uh you don't have a lot of, the ones that are in region, have a lot of them, get smaller mains. Uh and uh so we'll place several fire hydrants on these lines to cover fire flow.
When we're talking about fire flow, and everybody's gonna say, well, I don't need no fire flow. If I live up on Orchard North or Orchard Hill, or I live on the way to Belmont, or I live at uh uh Tuckaway Ridge, well, I'm not getting any fire flow. Okay. And it would be unfair or fear mongering to mention Maui or Pacific Palisades, Malibu. That would be fear mongering. But in the last ten years or fifteen years, when the seasons burnt down, they lost everything on the one side of the main room, right? Lost it all just because of one fire. And so when you think about Miller's Drug Store, or the buildings that are downtown, or what if you had a fire at Willow Manor for the nursing home, or you had people that aren't ambulatory or at the school, the alarm bells goes off and everybody runs out. What do you do when you have a nursing home? What do you do at Willow Manor? What do you do at Cawthorn? And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to fear monger, but what we have, if the fire lasts twelve hours, our seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons will get the five-hundred-thousand gallons over a period of long time. But we don't have the volume we need.
Yeah, fear mongering is the last thing we're gonna do here, but I think one of the things Jim mentioned back in uh Denver, what happens if we have a Los Angeles situation?
Right. Malibu or Galalas.
New system in the world. Far, far up that.
But but everybody remembers the seasons.
Yep.
I mean, that's.
You mean Maui?
Yeah, Maui, Hawaii.
Yeah.
Pacific Palisades.
And Pacific Palisades. Malibu was the other part.
Oh, it was.
Yeah.
And those are, I don't wanna.
Yeah, if you had a fire in one of the downtown businesses, you could lose a lot.
If if it got, if it got out of hand and you can't get to it quick enough and you can't put it out, and we had the little fire at the popcorn place, right? For whatever reason, that didn't spread, so.
Be- because there was actually a firefighter real close, you saw.
It was a meeting night, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This happened to be a meeting night for the volunteers.
The same thing happened with the paper place. They happened to be, they have to do training that night. And just because they all happened to be at Firehouse during training, that's why Heather buildings didn't prevail up there. Where where was it you were looking to put the the water tank?
Yeah, I don't see that on here.
Yeah, I don't see that on here. But there's EST, Elevated Storage Tank, in white.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Down there near Floyd Johnson.
I mean, there.
And again, this is just a.
We can put it, we can spend an hour talking about where to put it, but it needs to go somewhere in the downtown area. Um there's plenty of places. We could stick it out on the Truman Plant side, wastewater Truman Plant side, or there's all kinds of places. We're not really here to.
Fairness. One of the, one of the phase, one of the phase one life scheme was to leave it at Owls where the master plan had it. And that's a fifteen-million-dollar plan to run the line and clear up the Owls.
That's extra pipe.
In 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 a perfect world, if you're trying to protect Willow Manor and the Salt Creek Village, right, and you're trying to prep downtown, where would you put a tank? Halfway in between. So the shortest the distance to the car. So uh as an example, you could put it at the, talk to the county and see if you can't put it on the jail park. Talk to the high school. They get some benefit. Can we find a piece of dirt there? It's a tank. It's not gonna be does it go, you know, back where they practice their band practice or something? I don't know. Just saying.
That's a discussion of another night.
Yes.
It's gonna have to be on the fault line, so. Anybody have any questions on the project or what we're recommending?
Are there funding options available?
There you go. We're done with the project. I want Jared to answer some of this. Uh I might hand this out. What this is, is the fire protection map. And so Jared's gonna explain a little bit about what some options on financing. Uh we are looking at. Uh, we are looking at potential grants, uh, there's uh, Sandy and I have talked to a grant writer about the O C R grants. Those aren't a lot. If you look at a twelve point four million dollar project, you over grant seven hundred and fifty thousand, helps. It helps, I'll let, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll let Jared get some into some of this, but uh Jared's uh, looking at municipal bonds and finance. Uh, we also have a meeting with the USDA Real Development next week to discuss potential grants. Uh, grants with the USDA have not been very good last year. Um, I've done a lot of projects on with the USDA with a giant grant. They've just not been different those how, over twenty years ago. Wow, okay, your days in here. All right, maybe a little. But uh, so this well, let me, let Jared talk about, Jared, why don't you talk about the financing?
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, good evening, thank you guys for letting me join um, virtually here. Uh, and as as Dan kind of alluded to, I think uh for tonight, um, and I guess I'm I'm gonna preface it because there's there's a million and one ways we can set the rates and recover the money, um. But I'm I'm, I think what we've done is we've tried to come up with some ideas to give everybody a general idea of look, a twelve point four million dollar project, this is about what the rates could look like. Right, we have, there there's grants that could be uh obtained, there's, you know, different terms, you know, obviously if we extend the term, um, that could lower our annual debt service requirement, obviously it comes with a a a higher payback cost, but um yeah, none of this is final, I think the idea is that that you all understand the potential impact. Um, and I'm gonna try and share, uh, can I, can somebody give me this? Permission, and I'll share uh kind of the key schedule here. All right, just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let me know, um. Can you guys see that?
Uh, it's very small.
Sorry, and I can get you guys copies of this. But based, all right, so what we did was we, we kind of prepared three options and we looked at this quite a bit, we went back and forth with the U S B. Um, you know, everybody had some good ideas, but what we, what we wanted to show was kind of the the range, and so the first, you know, one option is like, look, if we just do an across the board increase on our current rate structure. Um, what would that look like, and that's actually, it's gonna be option two, um. The other thing we talked about was, we actually identified the area that would be directly benefiting from the hydrants, okay, so it's like the downtown area, there's a map, and we identified the number of um, you know, customers in that area, and so if if we recovered the money through through that, through like kind of a fire protection charge. You know, what would that look like, and then if we maybe did a hybrid approach, okay? So as Jim mentioned, you know, a twelve point four, right now we're assuming a twelve point four million dollar bond, a twenty-five year term with a five percent interest rate. It's kind of a um, you know, if we, we did something through real development, we could probably do longer. Uh, I don't think anybody's interested in doing shorter terms, given the impacts um on the rates, but that's kind of the standard set of assumptions we're making, so just kind of cutting to it. You know, if we had to do twelve point four million, five percent, twenty-five years, we're looking at a seventy-seven percent increase across the board, so currently your four thousand gallon rate, which is kind of the industry standard benchmark that that we use, is sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. That would increase to uh one hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty cents. Okay, so uh, we effectively have to generate about one point two million dollars to service the bonds. Okay? Um. The other option that we put together would be over here on the right, it's the option three, the fire protection area, and so we went through and we identified that basically the in-town customers, most of them are in in town, um, that are um, directly benefiting, as in, I guess, uh, and Nathan and Dan could clarify, but like a fire hose could be connected to a hydrant and then service a fire at one of these residents. Um, and so that was well, I don't have that number. There was, I believe there was two hundred and
Three, three hundred and fifty something customers.
Yeah, it was like three hu- three hundred and fifty-two customers that that would service, okay? Uh, and so just to kind of give you, it, this is kind of an extreme number, honestly, but like, if we charge like per E D U, so one home would be an E D U, as the meter size increases, there there's like a multiplier to it, but it would be like seventy-nine dollars a month. So if you're, if you're like a five-eighths inch meter residential home in the fire protection area, you would pay seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents on top of your kind of normal wastewater bill.
Bring it on. Well, and on top of the twenty-one percent increase on the water rate.
And and then there would be a twenty-one percent increase on the retail rates. So, cause we identified the portion of the project that is strictly fire related. Um, there's, as mentioned, there's other components of the project that don't really impact the fire protection. Um, so that's one, and and frankly, that's kind of an extreme, but we wanted to just identify it, right, because I think the idea is that like, look, if there's fire protection, there's a cost of fire protection, like what would it cost for those that like directly benefit benefited from it? You know, would there be a way to rec- recover some monies for that? Um, and that's what it would look like if we put all that entire burden on those, on those customers. Um.
Some of the, some of the thought was thinking if you live in if you live at Lower Center, or you live up on Bean Blossom Ridge, and there you're getting no benefit, why is my rate going up? Seventy percent, or the notion was that we could go up twenty-one percent for everybody, all fourteen hundred customers, but the people that see the largest benefit have to pay even more.
And that's seventy-nine dollars for each equivalent dwelling, so if they got two.
Plus, plus their regular rate, plus twenty-one percent more.
But if that meter, the two inch meter, they're paying for five equivalent dwellings.
I gave you the copies I have, just so you can see.
Yes.
This number here, right, when he says proposed water bonds, this nine hundred thousand, that's the five hundred to pay back the loan and four hundred in interest. And this thirty percent, it's actually thirty percent of these two numbers, because that's our current debt service, which is almost nothing. And the new rate increase, so this number here is the thirty percent on top, so what I'm telling him, one point two million dollars. It's this five hundred for the loan, four hundred for interest, three hundred for bond service. Those numbers I was talking about, and as you can see, he's taking the bond service or the the loan money, moved it down here.
That's recup, we're collecting that seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars through the seventy-nine dollar charge, that's why, excuse me, that's why it's included in here. And then we calculate the shortfall that would be applied to the across the board here, that's where the twenty percent is.
Help me understand per E D U he's talking about, so there'd be seventy-nine dollars for.
Wouldn't, yeah, what they're saying is, if you have a five-eighths meter at your distance, that's one equivalent dwelling. One inch, that's
maybe two, two and a half.
Two and a half, if you have an inch or two inch. Like some of the restaurants or whatever down, they're about five or six, so they're gonna, they're gonna have like three hundred and fifty dollars, over a dollar added to the monthly bill. Size and fee.
So one of the thoughts, uh, why we did that, one of those, we thought, well, maybe these downtown businesses would get a discount insurance. Possibly.
That was, just jot that down.
Cause the I S O rating would be much better.
Reason I'm very interested in other downtown businesses, it's a restaurant, that's, it is one of the key absolute major expenses, actually. So it's scary here, you know, I I did, it did write that down, one thing is I wonder if insurance, because that's been a, you know, I've I've never explored it or compared the insurance rates, but I do know that we pay more because
Your I S O rating is not great.
It is not great.
Hmm, yeah.
The insurance continues, you know, like increases faster than just about any other insurance that you're there.
Sure, and I guess, over moving these numbers, so you, what if I keep talking about this one point two million? When you see these two numbers, which was again, the loan and the interest, the bond carriers, that one point two goes to here. In effect. So if everybody across the board pays, it's a listing piece. And on this side, he moved the cost of your improvements, but left this up above. So there's the three hundred, okay? Everybody is gonna pitch in for the bond coverage, twenty-one percent. But the people in the fire protection zone are gonna make up the nine hundred.
And that's on the entire project, so. So Jim, on this scenario, this is the entire project, not, we didn't isolate, the the next option, hybrid options, where we isolate the fire, I I kind of misspoke, like um, the option three is the whole twelve million dollars is effectively being recovered through that fire protection charge. Okay, so the, so what we've done is option two or three are like the extreme examples, or um, in, you know, ends.
With with the exception of the twenty-one percent rate increase for everyone that makes up the three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Right, the coverage. That's coverage, but which is, coverage you have to have coverage, but you can use coverage for anything else in the utility.
It's, you're right, that's good, it's a good point.
It just, you have to show that you're bringing in more money than you have to pay in debt service, once it's in, then you can spend it on operations, capital outlay, anything else that you want. So it benefits everybody, or you know.
True, yes.
The the, so the hybrid has a charge for in-town and a charge for outside of town as well.
Once you hit the hybrid, Jared.
Yep, so, so, yeah, and this is why I try, I prefaced a little bit, there's like there's infinite options and combinations, and we tried to just find the best that it's equitable, right, the goal, my, one of my goals is obviously to generate enough revenue to to service the debt, but also to make it as equitable as possible, right, those that are benefiting or using or paying. Um, so, so the hybrid option, what we've done is we still have the same revenue requirements at the top there, right, we still have the one point two million dollars. But what we did was, we went through and we kind of pro rata identified what portion of the twelve point four million is related to fire protection, and and really, and Nathan and Dan can speak to this from the engineering side, it's the the water, the tank, is really you know, without getting down into like every little nitpicky thing, but primarily that tank is what's providing that th- thirty-five hundred, you know, gallons per minute or whatever, right, like, so so we identified, and that's, that's about thirty, that's thirty-one percent, I can actually think right here, so here's like, the whole twelve point four, you got soft costs down here. But the the storage tank is three point four million dollars, so thirty-one percent of the twelve point four million dollars is related to the storage tank, so we said, okay, if we allocate thirty-one percent of the debt service and the related coverage to the fire charge, right, what would that be, and that's about, that's the sum of these two numbers, so three hundred and forty thousand dollars. If we recover three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year through the, the um the fire protection charge, it goes down significantly. It's, we started with just doing the folks in in-town or in the fire protection area. We got to talking, and I don't even remember, I I maybe I was talking with Jim, I I forget who I was talking to, but we were talking about the idea that like, right now I'm not a fire expert, but right now, if there's a fire and a truck has to fill up, they have to go, like, they have to drive to Bloomington, maybe, is that right, like, it's not like, even whether you're in-town or out-of-town down there in Nashville, like, in, you know, and so there's a to me, it seems like there's a benefit to those individuals that may not, the hose may not reach, but by having hydrants that quickly rapidly fill up your tanker trucks and can get up the hill to wherever, and you know, put the fire out. It feels like there could be a benefit to those individuals to having this project you know, in-town, having active um hydrants, and so we kind of went with that, and you know, just trying to think of s- some ways to to kind of you know, spread out some of these costs, and and we said, well, look, if in-town pays, you know, X, say twenty-three dollars, and we provide a discounted for the the out-of-town or out-of-fire-protection area, and and we used like a third, so it's just thirty percent. Um, so that's where we came up with this twenty-three dollar for an in-town, so direct benefit to a fire hose versus out-of-town indirect, but there's still a benefit, because if the fire department needs to fill up their trucks, they don't have to hightill it to the next town over or whatever, um, to do that, um, so so we would recover a portion of the revenues through a fire protection charge. It still leaves a shortfall, excuse me, two-thirds basically of that that debt service, or eight hundred thousand to fifty-four percent um on the, the across the board on your regular uh water bill, and it'd be about a hundred and six dollars. That was a lot, um. So I'm happy to clarify.
The takeaway is simple. He figured one way to where everybody pays the same percentage basis. He figured one way, that's only the people that are in the town fire protection fund, they pay for it, all of it. And then we kind of thought, neither one of those, what would you do if you colored, took some of this and some of that, mixed them together to come up with a hybrid. None of these are necessarily black and white, none of them are cast in stone. They're just to color in, begin to color in a sketch of of the decisions that we will need to make going forward as to who should pay, or how you equitably, equitably distribute the costs. Okay, rough track.
Well, just as a knee jerk reaction, if someone uses a resident who has businesses that use a lot of water. I, I can tell you the hybrid just, like I said, knee jerk reaction feels, for lack of a better word, that are are good, because on the one hand, you know, the residents are gonna go, oh my gosh, that's, that's a lot to raise the rates. The other hand, the businesses are gonna go with the residents and go, why, you know, and so and just from an initial reaction working together, and that's, it's a great way to sell it as well.
Cause even if the residents aren't in that fire protection zone, they still benefit. I mean, if if a block burns down in Nashville, what does that do to everybody in the whole area?
Right. Could be a catch.
Yes.
We have no idea, it's a wild guess as far as how much this project would reduce our fire loss. And which it may drop from the
It'll drop from forty-five.
What kind of potential, okay, benefit and savings is that, we, for future, does that help future rate increases?
It, yes, and Jared has addressed that, we can't, let's say, for example, we get a half, it goes down to twenty-two and a half or something. We can't include that in the rate study, because it's not realized. We can't include that in the rate study because it's not realized at this point, isn't that right, Jared?
Yeah, yes.
Isn't like current losses like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in the cost of the water that's being lost?
In, in simple math, it's easy for me to remember, the ballpark would be we spend six hundred thousand dollars on water. And if we lose, if we buy fifty percent more than what we need, then we're buying, we need to buy four hundred thousand. And we're buying six hundred thousand, so we're, we're buying two hundred thousand too much. And if we were to. Have the best water loss for every little town that's supposed to have, that was only twenty five or thirty percent. The savings on the six hundred would be from six hundred to five hundred. So there's only a hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about. Now, if you want to know, why do we go fix leaks all the time? Why don't we fix the water system and have no leaks? Guess what? It's cheaper to fix a whole bunch of little leaks every year than it is to. You're only trying to chase a hundred thousand dollars, it makes more sense to spend fifty fixing leaks every day, sort of. Because the cost to fix the leaks is twelve million dollars plus. Nine hundred thousand dollars a year, we just borrow the money to go do it. So what we, what you do, what have we done for the last fifty years, you just do the best you can.
I mean, saving the, I mean, you save that, that, the amount of water that we're losing. That's insignificant to the amount of the cost of project, so we're only. Five to ten percent savings if we, we had a hundred percent.
You're not gonna.
You'll save that amount, that's an insignificant amount.
So, you're right, Scott.
We were just discussing the best, best community we've come across and what do you say, twelve percent?
So we saved a little bit, we're getting there, but we're never gonna get.
Not a community in Indiana that's zero percent.
We, we upgraded the system, we're in better shape, we, we're still losing water, but. That needs to be, the, the, the water loss is not the significant. Cost in, in the project, we're, we're improving it, but we're still gonna have that.
And Robin is actively looking for leaks and we've got some new technology that he's using on his hybrids, listening to leaks.
Has proven fruitful.
Pretty good, so.
I'm hoping that, what does this do to the future growth of?
Well, it helps it, it doesn't hurt it. Uh, it gives you the fire protection in that red zone and it encourages people to invest in the area. Now you have fire protection, your ISO rates should be better, hopefully insurance will go down. Um, I think it, it drives.
Doesn't have capacity, if you go ahead. Capacity as far as serving more customers, we have to do that on a, as needed basis, based on what the need is.
Yeah, capacity is not a huge problem. Unless you guys got a huge, I mean, I don't think you're getting a day of sun during the time.
No, but if you think about it, you are limited, uh, flow rates that you can purchase the water. From Brown County water. There is a gallon per minute limit.
It helps you with capacity because you can fill the tank up at night and use it during the day.
Right, the water, the water in town comes from Land Bridge, the big tank up on top of Land Bridge.
And if half of your water is water loss flowing twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, half of your gallons per minute. That you're currently flowing from Brown County water. You're flowing two hundred gallons a minute all the time, a hundred gallons a minute is barless, so this is, this is a capacity issue.
And if you could, if you could reduce your leakage by half. You'd be in, because you, right now, you're getting, uh. Warnings from my down, says, hey, you guys, water loss is unacceptable, well, you guys need to do things. Needs to be much lower, and that's what Robin's been working on a lot. But this would replace a lot of those mains that are leaking, plus pressure. I still, you know, the pressure is big, the, the pressure is way too high.
We, we found an easy way to find, uh, water loss leaks is to do some paving and through this. Then we'll figure out how to use the pavement.
Talking about the alley today.
That's always up. So then, just so I, I'm sorry. Say, just so I understand this prayer, because, uh, this is, this is not my, my thing that I'm generally under, that I have an understanding of. Option three, the fire protection area only. And that goes to this map, correct?
Correct.
And that means, and am I correct in thinking that means only the people who are inside this. Red line map would have an increase, residential and. They would pay the.
They would pay, even everybody would go twenty percent.
Depending on what option you guys choose.
They would, they would pay, uh, the. Fire protection charge.
And that's residential.
As I said, it's a knee jerk reaction, you know, on one hand, I'm paying instead of resident. It's like, you know, I'm paying this business, so it.
Yeah, in the interest of completeness, it needed modeling.
Right. And I think seventy would be a tough sell, I mean, you just hear that number.
The hybrid, that needs to be kind of the middle of the road type of the.
I, I did have a question before I, I've looked into the future at this project where it goes forward, is there any. Significant maintenance or anything on a water tank system? You know, I'm.
You have to paint a water tank about every twenty to thirty years. Yeah, but not a lot of maintenance on a, helping.
We've never had anything, I just didn't know if there are any.
You think in like even the structure, pulling it up and stuff?
Well, I just did, I just didn't know again.
There are tanks, uh, we do a lot of tank rehab and there are tanks that are fifty years old that are still structural and sound.
They're current tanks. They sit on the ground, but they're welded steel tanks and they are nice coated and.
That is true.
Better, yeah.
We looked at.
So what about ultimate quantitative answers? What, how, we. What, what is there? What have you seen out there? Is it? Is pretty much a five percent interest rate, that's it? There's, there's no way it translates for other.
Oh, Jared, and now if we do rule development, it would change, but Jared, you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's different programs out there, um. I think we're still, we're, we've, we've got a bit of a timeline here. So I mean, I could run a model at like SRF rates today or RD rates, I feel safe that five percent is. Kind of safe, uh, right now, um. So, right now, we haven't figured out exactly what that funding source looks like. And I can't tell you what the economy, I mean, because we're looking, let's say we move forward, this, this isn't happening, is it next year, Dan? Or, I mean. I'm sorry?
We'd be bidding late next year.
Into twenty six, probably closing twenty seven, so. I mean, right now, it's probably a little high on the open market side, but, um. Not, not a lot, we're probably looking for to four and a half, um.
If the, if the feds just lowered the long term rates to roughly four and a half. You have to think of it this way, not that we can get four and a half, but a little town like Nashville is going to have to pay more than the Fed. Right? US Treasuries are the safest risk you got, but they're at four and a half, so I don't think his five is. Off by, and if home mortgage rates are at six, right, he's in the right place and. On the nine hundred thousand, there's four hundred in interest. And so, uh, if we could save on five percent, if we save a half a point, that's ten percent, we'd save forty thousand dollars.
Right.
I mean, just as a.
I have a question too, so because of our flow issue and not having a high enough flow. Would we be on a list, maybe like what we did for the sewer project? Where we actually rose up higher, like with SRF, could we be on some type of list? Because that has helped us immensely with the sewer project, getting zero percent interest, qualifying for our large grant funds. Is there any way that, you know, we would be eligible for that?
Well, you're, you're on the list currently.
Okay.
Uh, you're just not very high. Uh, they, they give money a lot for, if you have contaminants in the water, right? To me, they ought to give money if you have a safety issue like a fire situation. Uh, but they don't, um.
Lead, copper, and PFOS are eating up all the grants.
Those are the big grant funds right now. Right, and the grant funds has been reduced tremendously over the last few years. Uh, grant funds are very hard to get, right? And, uh, but we have applied and we are actively trying to get that, yes.
Okay, very good.
I think we're like forty seven.
So to be higher on the list, we have to be in worse condition.
Yeah, pretty much.
And our rates have to be higher.
Rates would have to be higher. Those who have, uh, slow, low income tend to be ranked higher on the list as well.
Yeah, we do that, right.
The, uh, the rates need to be at least eighty five dollars or more to get considered for brains.
Is that for that? More than asking out of the C C.
Eighty five or more?
Yeah, it's that, it's also the project, guys, right? Like, I mean, when you look at the score sheet, you know, where does it fall? In environmental, social, you know, it's social. Uh, I can tell you to answer your question, which, because I felt like I kind of gave an unanswered, because like, what I don't want to do is oversell. Oh, if we do it at two percent, right, like, woo, you know, um, I'm trying, you know, be somewhat conservative. Basically, if you lower it from five to four percent, you're talking about two, two or three dollars generally on that, you, on. Kind of this, this charge right here, just so you have a bit of sensitivity analysis to it, right? So if I drop it down to four percent. It makes this like one nineteen.
I think the longer you wait, the higher the cost of capital is going to be. I mean, the, uh, the last two, uh, that he sings, the long term modern market, that's gone up instead of down. So, you know, the, the risk premium is going to be higher and higher as time goes on because the federal. Budget and the deficit is taking more and more of the capital that's out there, pre cap.
There's one little bit I'd like to share, is that. So let's go, I made the numbers for both. Our, in our water budget, we have one point six million of annual sales that we take in. Okay, where does that come from? We have fourteen hundred customers. We go through a hundred and two million gallons, a hundred and two million, sixteen million in. What's that mean? Our average pay in is basically sixteen dollars a thousand gallons. Our number one person that we sell water to is the state park. They use nineteen percent of our water. And give us sixty percent of our income, they're a wholesale customer. They pay five dollars and six cents for the year twenty twenty four, five dollars and six cents. Per thousand gallons, while everyone else is paying on average sixteen dollars. Forever, it's the state. And, 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 and when we talk about the state, they just gave you nine million dollars for free and nine million dollars. For zero percent, so they're not one of the bad guys, I'm not trying to say that, I'm simply saying. I don't think it's Jimmy Kramer's job to go up and talk to the DNR people and say, hey, here's what we're looking at. Can you help us in any way?
Because I mean, just from what I've seen about the deal with DNR, it just doesn't seem, it seems like it's all in their favor.
It's, it's a wholesale rate, we basically want to get the increase in the first place. Well, don't look at me, but why did you? I'm kidding.
There, I don't know.
It's be, it, well, we know why, we know why.
It's, there is a revenue component there, or even though it was a contractual renegotiated rate, there is a percentage of that rate that does come. There is support for operations and maintenance of the lines. You know, it's not like it was totally free pass through.
Yeah, it, to some.
So like, but if we do any of these plans, it doesn't affect them at all, they don't, they don't. Over any of that for them at all, because they've got their own separate contract with us.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Does that rate stay the same forever?
Water raises their rates to us and we can fast settle them.
That's it, that's all.
Well, we pay them, and I don't, don't quote me on the numbers since we're all, it's three, three bucks and a half, three and a half dollars a thousand. And we, and the state pays us four dollars and a half, so we make a little money. And it's a wholesale rate, now from their perspective, you could say, okay, the water's flowing from the meter at Salt Creek. Blowing out that way, and so, hey, if you guys want to go fix the line that goes up along the Proud Rest and out to the, the barn and. Out to the, the baseball fields and goes into the park or something, through the, across the dam near it, uh. What's the lakes where Lindaway used to live? Yeah, goes across there, yeah, we'll help you fix that. But why, if you're the park, why should we, the park, be making improvements for the town? It's your system and all your other guys are paying, we're just, it's a wholesale. I mean, it makes sense why it is the way it is, I'm just saying, if you gotta go get money. They've got to be part of the equation, they use twenty percent of the water and only give us six percent of the revenue, that's just a fact. I'm not trying to make anything of it, just, it needs to be in the back of your head. Now, the other thing, the other piece of that is. If you remove the state park and count the next forty five customers, the big customers, who would that be? The jail, the school, the seasons, uh. And everybody you can add, all right, and we call those the top forty five is what I call them, the top forty five. Just because at the end of the page, it was forty five and I didn't want to add up, I had to do it all manually. But the top forty five users that we have. With the exception of the state park, use thirty six million gallons out of our hundred and two. And provide thirty one percent of the income. So if you take the state park and them and add them together and subtract that out. What that means is, out of these fourteen hundred customers we have, let's just take out fifty to make it easy, thirteen hundred and fifty customers. They use forty six percent of the water and provide sixty three percent. Of the income. And, and the other part of that is, is for the people like Lance or Hawthorne or the nursing home. That instead of like me using, or if I'm using three thousand gallons or twenty, my, my, my water bill's a hundred and twenty bucks. Fifty dollars for water and seventy for sewer, okay, well, Jimmy Kramer, you got lots of money. Uh, we're going to double your rate, what the seventy percent doubled, okay, my rate from fifty dollars to a hundred, right? Now, somebody on social security and my retirement, I get it, it's fifty real dollars, but for me, it's not going to kill me. But if you talk about Casa del Sol or one of the restaurants in town or Hawthorne Village where their bill annually. Is twelve thousand dollars a year, you're talking about their bill going from twelve thousand to twenty four thousand. Or twelve thousand to twenty thousand, so when it comes to the people that are going to screen. Thirteen hundred and fifty are going to scream, a lot of them, but they're screaming about a little bit of money. It's the people in town, if, if, if I was trying to make a sales pitch to somebody, those people are going to be, it's a big, big to their bottom line. I don't know, you, you have a restaurant, if Casa del Sol, I'm just picking numbers, I don't know numbers, but if Casa del Sol had a million dollars for the sales. And they got to keep, somebody gets to keep a hundred thousand and you go take, add ten thousand to it, it's a big deal. Uh, so I guess what I'm saying is, the other thing in the equation is, people that use all the water, between the state park and the top forty-five people that are using a third of the water, they're the ones that are gonna see the biggest impact. And so, when you look at the hybrid system, they're already gonna be getting hit. If you add, put a lasso around all this, now you can see why I said we need to talk to you. Because it's not like we've got any money to go get, or it's a simple thing that, well, we just need to make a recommendation, the town will approve it. It's how are you gonna pay for it? We know what we need to do.
And the home uses a lot of water.
The nursing home?
Yeah. Like ten thousand.
I've got it here somewhere. They're in the top forty-five.
That'd be a lot of work for them.
Yeah. The jail uses a lot, the jail uses a lot of water because they're gonna empty the place in toilets. High school uses it, or sees.
Talking about development, future of business, there's also an impact on businesses here too that might say, of this.
Yeah.
Out of fourteen hundred customers, forty-five pay a third of money.
Is there any, is anybody heard of any town renegotiating with the DNR? I mean, is that complete? I'm crying in the sky to go back.
It's like twenty years or something, about twenty fifty or something, it's a long time.
Like, I knew it was, I just didn't know, I mean, their last name is like.
It's when, it's when you go talk to.
And then you don't get.
It's when you talk to Dave Hall and Aaron Coke, or Eric Coke.
Eric.
The senator, when you talk to them, that needs to be a part of their picture that they see.
Now, what about, you brought a eye-hand plus in that case?
When we're asking for help.
I mean, sir, what if we don't do anything about it? What are we gonna do about it?
Well, eventually their patients could run out, uh, at which point in time they, they could put the town under an agreed order, a mandate that should do something. I mean, we went through this on the sanitary sewer side. We are technically still under an agreed order to fix the sewer system. They could very similarly enact one on the waterside to regress water. It's possible.
I would, uh, sit in Cincinnati when we had, can you send the period and the PAs and that, it's not something you want to get very expensive.
You get into fines, things like that.
It's possible.
Oh, I, I think it's remote, but it's possible.
What's the next step here?
Sleep on it.
Well, yeah, the, correctly from wrong, Jim, but the idea here was to get.
We're supposed to sleep after this?
Was to get buy-in from the council because the USB has been mulling this over for almost, almost a year now.
Six months or so.
Six months, yeah.
If you want to, so I think the next steps need to make a decision.
Please, please tell us.
So that's, that's number one, you gotta decide whether you want to move forward. Second thing, how do we pick? Are we good with the hybrid? Are we good with other things? Now, in the meantime, we're looking for other grants. Um, you know, like, like I said, I think it's, it's tough to get grants right now. Um, and then the third thing would be, you have to get engineering started because that takes time. And, uh, you know, if, if you don't get that going, cost, capital costs keep going up and up and up. So this twelve point four is gonna be thirteen something in two years. So, time is very important on some of this stuff. It's been identified, we've talked about it, I bet we've talked, you said three years. Earlier on, you said for three years, yeah, it's been, I remember having a, uh, meeting with, uh, during COVID with the town of Nashville with, with this, five years ago. And everybody was at home. When the meeting's going on, and we had a virtual meeting, and we said, hey, you got a problem, fire.
Yeah, it's fire protection.
Yeah, we've been, I mean, we've been working on this and, I mean, USB, putting USB hat back on, but second, they're doing. But, uh, we've been talking about this for a long time, we've kind of put it on pause while we got the sewer project up and going and moving forward and everything, because that was the one we had before. So, I mean, obviously, we did the, the study a few years back, we kind of put on pauses and now, a few months ago or a year ago, whatever, is we were like, all right, the fire performed on this sewer project, we gotta do something about this water. Because we've got a safety issue, we've got a pressure issue, we have breaks to shut restaurants down in town, you gotta add the cost of losing busy holiday weekend because the water loss and the equation of the police as well. We've taken it as far, USB has taken it as far as they can without spending significant money. So now we're at the point that we have to spend money to keep some moving, or we don't. Now, I think that's kind of where we are with this, with, with bringing it to the board. Do we keep going because we need to spend money on engineering, we need to figure out where that comes from? Or is, are these numbers obscene and the town folks are gonna go crazy about it?
That's the question.
In my own mind, I think, what would I do? I'd go start looking for money. Now, I'm an engineer, I'm a boil there, I know how to do, I know how to look at this stuff and translate it for you. I don't know how you, I don't know how you get grants, I don't even know how you do it. I don't know for somebody, I dial up one four hundred, one eight hundred grants, and they come in and tell you how to do it. Uh, I think, well, I, I could, you know, Dave Hall gave me a thing for my doggies and cookies for my dogs when I went to the break. Do I call Dave Hall? Do I talk to Coke? Do I talk to DNR? And, and then I, in my mind, I know, that's not my place to be doing that, number one. And number two, why would I talk to them if we don't have buy-in from the people that we're reporting to? And so, to some extent, in my own mind, I think, when is the time you go talk to somebody like that? Now, this is off the wall, off the wall. But as a brainstorm, the only other thing I can humanly think is, if we're thinking to ourselves, this is the town of Nashville. And on the fourteen hundred customers, we have about eight hundred on sewer. So what does that mean? Town Nashville is about eight hundred customers, and we've got six hundred customers out of town. Why do we have six hundred out-of-town customers? Well, because we went to Monroe County to get the water, and then somebody in Beanloss decides they want water, so we got fifty miles of those from Belmont to Beanloss. And then you think, well, if all the benefit of this is for Nashville, and if a third of the water is being used in Nashville, and that's where we are, and we're the town of Nashville, not the town of Brown County, why do, in my head, like I said, brainstorming outside the box, I think, why do we have, why do we have any water lines that goes from Kelly Hill to Belmont? Why do we have anything north of Orchard Hill? And then I think, oh, I got an idea, I wonder if somebody'd be interested, I wonder if Brown County water would like to buy that portion of the service. And so I think, okay, if they did, I wonder if, who knows what that is worth, right? But if Brown County water said, oh, yeah, we'd like, I mean, we're, we, we have a hard time figuring out how to get them with the county or wherever they want, Hard Truth, or the Opry, or blah, 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 blah. Everybody wants to give us sewer. Right? Because nobody's named place to send sewer, but they can get water somewhere else. But for getting all of that rhetoric, or whatever you wanna call it, belonging. If you could sell the system that we don't need any longer, because we're not looking back to the fifties and sixties, we're thinking to the two thousand fifties, I wonder if Brown County water would be willing to buy it? If they, I don't know what they would give you, I don't think they're gonna give you twelve point four million dollars. But if they gave you five million dollars or three million dollars, that's more than you got. Ooh, but wait a minute, Kramer. If you get rid of six hundred customers, you lose on your one point six million, how much do you lose? And I ran some big round numbers, big round numbers, and I think the people that are outside the town generate some sort of, or ground, I don't. Can't remember where we're at now. It may be on the sheets of the hand in the end. If, I, I think, I think, we're doing, it's all right, I think, I think those number, I think, out of the one point six million in gross revenue, the quote-unquote six hundred you're out, and maybe you wouldn't, maybe it's not all the six hundred, maybe, well, hey, we want to annex and be cloud-pressed one day, or up on top of here, or, you know, we're gonna grow over here, we want to grow up Jackson Branch, wherever it might be, whatever that number is, it won't be the whole six hundred today, it could be less, but I think that's roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars you're gonna lose in income. And so, to put, and, well, oh, guess what? If we don't sell them the water, then we don't have to pay six hundred thousand dollars a year for water, do we? We're gonna buy less water and have less loss. And I think I figured that's around, round numbers around a hundred and twenty thousand. So if we got rid of the out-of-towners and just kept the in-towners and could figure out how to sell it, the system beyond what we want, because we're the town of Nashville, that you could, you'd lose about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars a year, you'd save a hundred and twenty thousand of water, so you're looking at, you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus, you wouldn't have to maintain it.
Now, the, the problem with that, of course, is water's easy, right? You just don't buy the water. But when you look at the budget, we have salaries that make up a third of salaries with human bodies. And so, one of the reasons to talk to the city council that's looking at their one point two million dollar budget versus our three point six is, uh, you're not gonna divide a sandy in half. So how do you, it, it would require someone looking at the finances in total and rebalancing. Or it is Brenda's that I would go. Or it is, uh, on the workers that we have, you lose one worker. And so, it's not mess, that's why I'm saying it's an outside the box.
They're gonna build on one of those outside customers, but not within the city limits if we've got say, or somewhere, we're practically, other stuff that wants to be built, it's not gonna be built at the town limits, it's gonna be built on all these outside customer areas that we connected to. So we cut all that out, sell that to someone, any kind of development that will hit the service there. There's not gonna be any, any development within the town limits that we, that will last.
I, 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 like I said, it's just a brainstorm outside the box. How did I get there? We don't have twelve point four million dollars, we've been told by the pros that we're not gonna get it. And, uh, in my own mind, I don't think, uh, seventy-two percent or seventy percent rate increase is gonna sell to anybody necessarily. And so, then I'm just thinking, well, where could you get some money? And again, from little Jimmy Kramer that grew up here and they think about the town and what we got in town and eight hundred customers here, et cetera. And I think to myself, how did they get here? That's how we got here, and could you do that? I don't know.
Great.
We have, but I don't know if you talk, and then I don't know if we talk to Steubaker, who do you? Anyway, sleep on, question is, who are we talking to next?
We have people, and we have great staff on the board, we have engineers on the board. And, but beyond, you know, we're not able to, we're not able to do the high-level design and the planning, and that's why we have our consultants. And that's why we have to hire someone that would find us the graph and research them. But I think at this point, I think we need to decide if we're gonna move forward on it as a coun, as a council. And the next thing would be, move forward on it and decide which funding option we would like to do. Maybe it's a little, maybe it's too soon to decide that, maybe we just decide to move forward and we put the motions of the contract in place for you, your company to do some for, for the planning and their research and grants. But I think we need to make a decision on whether we're gonna do that.
Then we have to break some.
Yeah.
And so far.
Although that, or keep picking Dan and them or?
Well, I wanna keep doing that.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like.
It's not gonna do us any good, it's not gonna do anybody any good to do that, um. Why don't we bring it up again at the next council meeting, give us some time, just sleep on it, like you mentioned, mull it over, and then we can readdress it, and on, on October sixteenth.
I wasn't looking for an answer tonight by a stretch.
And what would that look like at the next council meeting, with that big motion to proceed with? Yeah, they, would, would we break it into chunks, as to how it can proceed, so if we hit some sort of snag?
Alan has asked me to prepare a contract to move forward with his own. Uh, I plan to give that to them a week before the USB meeting. Uh, I think the USB meeting's on the tenth. Maybe, and I was gonna get it to him on the third. So, that would be the first step, so USB would make a decision to move forward.
I mean, in all fairness, it's a big decision. Yes, it's not exactly what you'd say pain-free.
Yeah.
And so, even if it's something, we figure out what we're doing for twenty twenty-six, nothing wrong with that either, in my mind. At least we're moving forward, we're not stuck. I mean, not move good and fast, but at least we're looking forward.
A great presentation.
Yeah.
Every question answered, and I really appreciate the expertise sitting this room right now.
Are we done with water?
Yes.
I don't know.
All right, well.
Could we get them to tell this board about the sewer, you have paid on the sewer?
Are we getting an update on the sewer project right now?
We could bring it to the October meeting as well.
Is it something that can wait for the October meeting?
I mentioned, we'll wait till October.
Making progress.
That's good.
I, I like progress.
Making progress.
Uh, good, well, and it's on schedule.
And it's on schedule.
And you'll be there?
Well, maybe, I'm just kidding.
We could be at the October meetings.
All right, good, well, let's, let's do that then, let's. Yeah, so we, um, okay. There's nothing else? No, there's no jury, second meeting, thank you, it's, uh, Brenda, I don't know what time it is, I just sat up here, you do. Here, 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 thank you, I'm not sure.